Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. So to begin, we're going to go around and introduce ourselves and if we choose to, share a book or that we're reading. Chris, we'll start with you.
By John Bodnar, and it's about patriotism, actually after nine eleven, but I didn't know if it would give me some insight after some of these wars have started as well.
I'm Hari Essery, and I'm reading Salito, and it's about a nine-year-old boy going from El Salvador all the way up to the American border by himself. I mean, he went with a coyote, but no family, and it's his memoir.
Like a real coyote?
Well, no, with the person that takes you.
Gotcha, gotcha.
That's what they call it.
I'm Jamie Burkhart, and I am finishing up a book called The List. It's a YA, and I just picked up the Merciless Ones, which is a second for The Gilded Ones, which I read a couple of years ago and really liked, and I thought I should catch up.
I'm Greer Carson. I'm reading The Conquest of Happiness by Bertrand Russell, and the moratorium on video games continues in our house this month.
I'm Chris Harrison, and I am currently listening to, almost finished with, The Secret of Nightingale Wood by Lucy Strange, and I am reading The Ghostly Photos by Margaret Peterson Haddix.
My name's David Ferguson, and I just started listening to The Missing Billionaires.
Nichelle Wash, and I'm listening to Worthy by Jada Pickett Smith.
I'm Kathy Loser, and I'm reading the sequel to Fourth Wing, which is called Iron Flame. It's the big hot book of the season.
All right, so the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, which include the minutes of the October meeting, monthly financial report, monthly bills for payment, personnel report, and the board meeting calendar? Okay, questions or comments for Greer? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda items signify by saying aye, aye, opposed nay. The ayes have it. Okay, next, we're going to turn to Greer for the director's monthly report.
Okay, October saw another month of strong collection use. Overall, our 2023 digital collection use is on par with or exceeding last year's use. October was also the first month we've surpassed 1,000 room reservations in a single month, and this is due to the addition of the Southwest Branch room reservations. Speaking of monthly use statistics, the asterisk that you may have noticed next to the overall visitor count at the top of the report refers to the fact that our Southwest RFID gates, which include a built-in visitor counter, have not worked properly since we installed them. Despite our high hopes for these gates, they have so far disappointed. Our visitor count, therefore, reflects downtown Elletsville and outreach patrons. We will be installing our legacy door counting scanners at Southwest beginning next month, so we can include those total numbers starting in 2024. At the same time, as we've indicated to the security gate vendor, we're reviewing our contract with them and considering alternatives to this product, so that's kind of disappointing. Our Facebook reach last month totaled 330,719. That's a 1,400% increase over the previous month. To put this in perspective, our total Facebook reach for all of 2022 was 135,028, and this incredible increase was due to a single MCPL Facebook post, the My Job Is Library Barbie Mean, which went semi-viral, reached 320,000 accounts, generating 8,200 reactions, 426 shares, and 348 comments. So regardless of one's opinion of social media, it's safe to say that our online presence is beneficial and that we've got an outstanding communications and marketing department. We saw a 45% increase in vital one-to-one volunteer tutoring over the first quarter, thanks to our new online training platform, which we had shared was in development earlier this year. We had another successful annual zombie prom with 70 teens attending. Last year, we had 50 attendees, so our Night to Dismember is growing in popularity. We held our first outdoor reading program at Southwest in the Hayne Family Amphitheater with a Scary Stories contest. And our Southwest Branch Library was featured in the 2023 Library Journal Year in Architecture issue, the first of what we hope will be a number of features and recognitions for MCPL and our new branch, and the photos were, for the entry, were taken by our own visual marketing specialist, Aubrey Dunick. Happy to answer any questions about the director's report.
Seeing none? Oh, go ahead. No?
Even though we can't count the people coming into the Southwest Branch, can you see an increase in book checkout because? So?
We can also sort of average what the likely door count is for Southwest, and we'll wind up including that in the annual report in January because we need to do that. But one of the things we were very excited about with these RFID gates was not only that they look really good and they would work well in the space, they're unobtrusive, they're transparent, but they've got this software built into them, and it just hasn't worked as it was supposed to, and it's been difficult to get service on them, so we're hitting sort of the end of that.
Okay, thank you, Greer, for those updates. Next, we're going to move on to old business, and we have one action item for this. Last month, we had heard an update about the proposed 2024 benefits package renewal, so tonight, we're going to be voting on that. Do we have a motion to approve the benefits package renewal for 2024? Okay, and so for this, Greer's going to share with us a little bit.
So as we talked about last month, we're happy to propose the renewal for our insurance plan for '24. We had a very positive experience with the Anthem Plan this year after having switched from SIHO at the start of the year, and we have secured a rate, rather, rate freeze on the plan for next year along with our dental and vision plans. The packet includes a renewal rate sheet indicating the Anthem rate hold and the requested JA benefits commission rate of $30 per employee per month. To clarify something we had talked about last month, we confirmed that JA benefits are indeed paid directly by Anthem and not by MCPL. Our sources confirm that JA's request for a commission formula change from a monthly premium percentage to a flat $30 per employee per month is consistent with the norms of the wider insurance broker market. So we included a consultant carrier compensation letter and a broker compensation disclosure statement in the packet, just to clarify how JA benefits is compensated for the work that they do for us. So we bring this to you all tonight for any further discussion and an eventual vote on approving the 2024 benefits package.
Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the 2024 benefits package renewal signify by saying aye, aye, opposed nay. The ayes have it. Next, for our new business, the first thing we're going to hear is the 2024 to 2026 strategic plan update and draft report from Greer.
Okay, this is a little lengthy, so bear with me. I'll go as quickly as I can. We are excited to be near the end of the draft planning stage for our forthcoming 2024-26 strategic plan. Our last plan was created in 2020 during the pandemic, and it's helped us focus our work from 2021 through this year. We are doing another three-year plan to focus much of our work from 2024 to 2026. These plans help us assess how we're meeting our community's needs, what we need to do better, and how we plan to get there. The current plan for '21 to '23 is focused on many areas of services that we'll continue to work on in the new plan, including developing our digital collections, specifically eBooks and e-audiobooks, and some better marketing to promote those collections, developing our Library of Things collection, expanding checkout times and renewal options, and reviewing our fines and fees policies, simplifying the patron discovery process for collections by improving backend ILS configurations and public-facing discovery tools. Focus on gardening and sustainability programming and resources was a part of our previous plan, a commitment to building and opening the Southwest Branch, our first new branch since 1991. And as it was developed during the first year of the COVID pandemic, that plan had a number of goals which were specific to providing contactless services, virtual programs, and the eventual reopening of the library, and re-engaging with patrons face-to-face. We've successfully completed many of the action items from the current plan up to and including a number of projects that have been completed this year, and in many ways, we view this next three-year plan as a continuation of the current plan. Included in tonight's packet is a description of the strategic planning team's process for gathering community and staff input and the areas of service we need to focus on over the next three years based on that input. The final plan will include introductory and community summary statements, lists of library awards, certificates, significant improvement projects since 2020, and the requisite financial stewardship statement and maintenance schedules. And importantly, the final draft will also include a list of department-specific action items for 2024, each of which will relate directly to one of the five stated goals outlined in the plan. So I'd like to summarize the community feedback we received and those five goals that our team subsequently developed for this new plan. First, patrons have clearly indicated they value our circulating collections and the range of materials and checkout options that we provide. At a time when book bans and content challenges loom over discussions of library collection development, Monroe County residents want to see us continue our commitment to collecting a wide range of materials, formats, and topics, and to ensure they remain as accessible as possible. We will be looking at ways to be more strategic in developing popular collections, such as our adult print, e-audiobooks, and Library of Things collections, all of which were cited specifically in the community feedback. We will also focus much of our staff training and development work around the principles of intellectual freedom and how it guides public library work and community engagement. Second, patrons continue to want more diversified program offerings and see this as key to the library's support of lifelong learning. We will be looking at ways to incorporate new types of programs across all audience areas, with a particular focus on health and wellness, digital literacy and digital equity, STEAM learning, technology instruction and support, and educational programs. And we'll be considering new program schedules and new program evaluation metrics in order to be more strategic in making programs attractive and accessible, and to make sure we're hitting the mark on the areas of interest we hear the most about from patrons. Third, our community wants a safe and welcoming downtown library. And our third goal will focus on improving our downtown facilities and updating our behavior rules and enforcement strategies to better ensure that everyone who visits our Kirkwood location feels both welcome and comfortable, no matter what area of the library they choose to use. This will involve exploring service and resource opportunities to better support our unhoused patrons, behavior policy updates and approaches to rules enforcement that are more effective in maintaining consistently safe use of library facilities, and community outreach efforts to strengthen our partnership with area shelters. We'll be looking at existing spaces here at the downtown library and considering what repurposing and rebranding opportunities we should pursue to add more unique experiences and to make this library location a true destination for Monroe County residents and visitors alike. We'll be planning for continued improvements in our Elletsville branch following the success of our 2018 renovation project, and looking at further development of our new Southwest Branch, particularly the grounds and outdoor facilities. We have bathrooms, elevators, doors, and signs here at the downtown library, which all warrant upgrades over the next three years. And we'll start thinking about and planning for the eventual replacement of our Bookmobile, hopefully to coincide with the Bookmobile Centennial in 2029 to celebrate 100 years of mobile library service in Monroe County. We also know that community partnerships are critical to our mission and our success, and though the public feedback did not specify partnerships as a service priority, the strategic planning team understands that maintaining our focus on partnership development is very important. So we need to better define what constitutes a formal partnership with MCPL, how we evaluate potential partnerships so that area organizations understand the benefits and expectations inherent in library partnership. This will also help us be more consistent in partnership development and in helping newer staff identify partnership opportunities throughout the county. We need to focus attention on new partnerships that will help us connect with underserved populations and underserved areas of the county, and we need to find better internal tools for managing our partnership programs and reservation processes, much like we've done with volunteer management software this year and currently our rooms reservation software review. And finally, for this three-year plan, we are going to adopt a fifth strategic goal, which focuses on who we are as an employer and how our identity and organizational character play leading roles in attracting today's top talent and ultimately translates into first-rate library service for our community. And to that end, we created an internal strategic plan survey just for staff, which was completed earlier this month. We're analyzing the results now, and those results will inform some of our specific action items over the next three years. In advance of that feedback, we already know that we need to continue to look at competitive compensation models. We need to enhance our employee lifecycle program to include more robust performance management and professional development processes. We need to build on the spirit and philosophy behind our continuous improvement initiative and review where we are relative to those important operational and cultural changes, and track what needs to be done next in order to make good on the goals of that project. And we need to look at ways to help more staff get involved in system-wide discussions, committee work, and other forms of workplace engagement and improvement. These five goals will serve as a guide in much of our decision-making over the next three years. As such, they will provide the framework for our monthly director's reports, just as the last set of strategic goals has. Our leadership team is currently finalizing 2024 department action items, which will be included in the final draft of the strategic plan. We will evaluate progress on these action items as we move through 2024 and have that progress then inform 2025 action items. The final draft will again include those other requisite pieces and will eventually be published as high-gloss colored booklets and posted to our website. We will bring this final draft to the December 13th board meeting for your review and adoption before publishing. So we are happy to answer questions about the strategic plan and its draft form. Josh Wolfe, who's been part of many previous MCPL strategic plans and was part of this team, is also here to help answer any questions.
Are there any significant changes from the previous one?
I would say no. Do you want us to?
It doesn't seem to me, but.
No, it's very much a continuation, and some of the community feedback is almost verbatim from what we saw in 2020.
There aren't really, there's less of a focus. As Greer said, it was 2020, so the focus on adaptability was huge at the time. We were a little bit disappointed in the responses to our questions about teen services, and we are following that up. Currently, we've collected several hundred hand responses from teens directly at our service point, so that's different. We haven't done that before, and that came from Teen Services Manager Sam Ott.
The connection or not clearly thinking about it, but the continuous improvement plan and this, are there, is there any overlap? Are we finished with the continuous improvement?
So the continuous improvement as an initiative was really the library pressing pause and taking a look at the way we do what we do internally. Everything from some of our operational norms to our communication norms to our culture and the idea of being what we now think of as an employer of choice. So on the surface, it doesn't seem to connect much to what we provide to the public, except that having those better norms in place and shifting the way we think about who we are as an organization ultimately does lead to better public service. The strategic plan is very much a direct response to public requests for what the library should do more of, less of, better of, things like that. So there is an overlap because continuous improvement is ongoing. It's really more of a mentality for us, or that's what we want it to be. Whereas the strategic plan is a more concrete set of specific goals that we know we need to achieve through specific action items, and we do that every three to five years, no matter what. Continuous improvement was voluntary on our part. We decided that we needed to do it. Yeah.
Where something is really going strong in one of the libraries, and we take it to another library now that we have the three branches?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And it's interesting always to see, sometimes, yeah, it spreads and it goes really well, and then other times, it's like, for some reason, it's not hitting that note that you want or getting it, then you have to kind of go back to the drawing board. Was it the wrong time? Did we not do our marketing right? Yeah, yeah, but we also, yeah, and we are, we have some new librarians because we've expanded, and we're just now talking about sort of collabing them and getting them together so they can plan things, but also program across branches.
I'm just curious, because the strategic plan, again, came a lot from community feedback. While I totally applaud goal number five, how did that come about? Since obviously probably community feedback didn't really drive you towards looking more internally, how does the library meet the needs of its staff members?
Yeah, that was very much us deciding we needed to adopt a fifth goal this time around, and that's that connection, Nichelle, to the continuous improvement piece of just a couple of years ago, is that we need to keep that a big part of who we are and what we focus on. Community doesn't know anything about that stuff, apart from what we talk about here, but we know it's important, so we decided to adopt really sort of an internal goal that has an ultimate public-facing product, which is improved service.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you both for that update. All right, and next, we have another action item, a resolution to establish a cash change fund for the Southwest Branch Library. Do we have a motion to approve this? Okay, and Josh, do you want to just give us a?
Thank you. Earlier this year, we asked for a resolution to maintain $100 and change in our cash register at the new Southwest Branch, just as we do at downtown and at Elletsville. We hadn't really counted on the impact of 50 to 70 very hungry teenagers coming every day after school to the library and asking for change for fives and tens and twenties. I was probably still in an eighties economy when I was thinking about this before, for teenagers, and we don't want to refuse them change for our vending machines. Hungry teenager who hasn't eaten since 11:30 or 12:30, by 4:30 is definitely in a state. At the same time, our cash register is now frequently full of very large denominations. We can't make change for the folks who come in and want to pay their library fees. So this new resolution is meant to address that. As an aside, I mean, there's nowhere else to get food in walking distance right around there. So it's kind of, it is an issue to an extent. We do, we are trying to address it with our programs. We do have the kitchen here. Our teen staff is looking at everything from making mac and cheese. We have a little side fund for kids who are really in a bad state. Here, quick, eat this granola bar. But it's not enough, so we're doing that. They are vending machines, and it is junk food, so we're now looking at our vendor we're talking to about getting more healthy options in there and seeing what we can do with that. It's not looking like apples and oranges, but there are some better choices out there, which we're hoping to introduce. So that's kind of where we are and why I'm here. Yes, yes, exactly, and that's what we are doing, yeah, with programs and stuff, and we're looking at big, starchy, protein-filled things that we can do and make. And even, even if the program's not in there, we can make it in there, certainly, and bring it in. Right, that's the way to go, the quick fix. Yeah.
And teach them how to make their own. I mean, have the ingredients there.
That's a great point, and there are, there's a huge sort of opportunity to have that conversation and look at the difference in how you feel after eating a PB and J versus drinking a soda. Yeah, certainly.
You know, getting change for the vending machines, are there options that you've explored to look at, you know, those machines that you can put a dollar in and get four quarters back?
Yeah, that was, that was one of the alternatives we considered when we were tossing this around. We have one here. We decided to wait and try this first, partly because the machine is quite large and the space there is much smaller. If you see, when you go down the hall, it's pretty big. The second issue is the vendors themselves are less inclined to give you those because they don't make any money off of them. They don't, you know, when you do that at the grocery, they take a bite, but the ones here, they just give straight-up quarters. Yeah.
The idea, and I don't want to put negative feed out there, but it might be safer to have money in the drawer than it might be in the vending machine because something, students might know that the money's in there, and so they might be less, I mean, more interested in trying to figure out how to get that extra cash out. Unfortunately, I've worked in places where I need to think that way.
Those kids, yeah, my arm up in there trying to pull the, yeah, I grew out of it.
Change is?
Yeah, so we break down, we maintain $100 in the cash register all the time until, and then we just take out once a week what's been put in on top of that and send it down and process it. So instead of that $100, we will maintain the $200 in there, so we'll have more change to give, and that'll be flat. And then the payments that we take for extra copies or replacement fees or whatever, those will just be carved off the top. But instead of carving it down to 100 each week, we'll just, or we'll go to 200. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the resolution to establish the cash change fund for the Southwest Branch signify by saying aye, aye, opposed nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, Josh. Okay, next, we're going to hear some department updates, and we'll begin, I think, with Chris Jackson, our Outreach Services Manager, and then go to Bethany Turrentine, our Outreach Assistant Manager and Vital Coordinator.
Hello, I am Chris Jackson, manager of Outreach Services, and as always, it's a pleasure to update you on what we've been doing in the department for the last year. Our mission as a department is to mitigate barriers to access that county residents may encounter in getting to library services. Now, the new Southwest Branch is a huge improvement in that area. Having a beautiful new facility with lots of parking and a fast-growing area of the county is going to make library services a lot more convenient for many, and that's great. But we are a countywide system, and three buildings really aren't capable of meeting the needs of everyone in the county. We have people who are too young to drive, people who are old enough that they're not driving any longer. We have people who, for socioeconomic reasons, aren't able to regularly get transportation. Health issues come into play. Your geographical location in the county comes into play. Your mobility may be limited for a lot of reasons. You may have issues with literacy, either English literacy, even if you're a native speaker, or English as a new language literacy. So our goal as a department is to mitigate as many of those barriers as we can so that all county residents can benefit from the library services that are really out there for everyone. We, as a department, comprise really six different service points. We have our Bookmobile, we have our van service, we have a house call service formerly called Homebound, we have a service to daycare and Head Start facilities, we have a service at the jail, and then we have Vital, our volunteers in tutoring adult learners, which is our adult literacy service. Bethany here will be presenting on Vital, and I will fill you in on what's been going on in the rest of those service points. Before that, though, we have 10 people in the Outreach Department, including myself, nine full-timers, and one part-time person. I'll start off with Bookmobile, which is probably the most visible of our traditional outreach services. Our truck is a 30-foot truck that we purchased in 2010, went into service at the beginning of 2011. It is, as Greer mentioned, coming up towards the end of its service life. It was originally scheduled to be replaced in 2026. It is running strongly, so I'm hoping to get a couple more years. I would love to get a new Bookmobile in 2028, just in advance of the centennial, and I can't wait to start thinking about all the fun things we'll do to celebrate 100 years of Bookmobile service in the county. So the Bookmobile really specializes in three categories of users. It goes to those rural, remote population clusters, the smaller towns in the county like Harrodsburg and Stanford and Steinsville. It also goes to many of the lower-income apartment complexes, wherever they are in the county. We know that low-income families are generally less likely to be library users for a number of reasons. We want to make it easy as possible by pulling up as close to your door as we can, and we've never charged fines. We don't charge fines anywhere now, but we've never charged fines on the Bookmobile, and we're extra lenient when it comes to forgiving past transgressions such as lost books, to make sure that those families, for whom a replacement cost might be really prohibitive, can still benefit from library services. We also go to some senior living communities with the Bookmobile, and we always have, but we realized that we weren't able to meet seniors with, or anybody with lower mobility, which is why the van service came along. But back to Bookmobile, we go to 29 different locations. We're on a weekly schedule, so we go out every day of the week, except for Friday. We have a different team that goes out, and it's somebody from Outreach behind the wheel, and then a second person, which can be either an Outreach staff member or somebody from another department who spends one day a week in Outreach. That's a pretty coveted position because being out on the Bookmobile is a lot of fun. It doesn't suit everybody. It's starting to get cold in the middle of January. It may not be your favorite place, but Outreach really is a fun spot, specifically because we build personal connections with our patrons in a way that's more difficult to do in the branches. Bookmobile circulates about 80,000 items per year. We're up a little bit at this point from where we were. We're up a little bit at this point from where we were last year. We're not quite back to pre-pandemic levels, but I think we'll probably get there in another year or two. I can talk a lot about what makes bookmobile circulation grow and what doesn't. I'd be happy to have those conversations, but it is a kind of a long-term relationship, and after the pandemic, we lost a lot of patrons. Families tend to age out of it as kids get older and have more homework and more extracurricular activities, so we see a lot of families with young kids. We see a lot of older residents as well, but some of those families never got the chance in the 2020, 2021 years, so we're, we're still trying to recoup some of that loss, but, but circulation is strong, and we've seen a recent uptick. Some of our slower stops, we always talk this time of year about stops that we're going to cancel and new stops we're going to try. So I had three or four stops that were on the bubble two months ago, and three of those are now performing way above where they were. So I don't know what I'm going to change next year, but we'll make some changes, I'm sure. I did mention the van service kind of grew out from the bookmobile going to senior facilities, but not being able to serve everyone at a senior facility. For the bookmobile, the expectation is that you'll come onto the truck and browse the collections on the shelves there, but if the stairs are a barrier to you, you're not going to have that browsing experience. So in 2004, we purchased our first outreach van specifically to go to assisted living, nursing home, and senior living facilities. And that service is really going strong with the growing baby boom population, getting older, we're seeing more assisted living facilities and more use of the van service. The van visits locations on an every-other-week basis. We currently have 10 stops on the service. We're adding an 11th next month, and we have another location that we hope to start in January of next year. The van, like I said, it doesn't assume you're going to come on the vehicle. We actually take the contents of the vehicle off on, on mobile library carts and roll them inside to a lobby or a meeting room in the facility so that patrons can have that browsing experience. We do have a lot of browsing there. It's a limited browsing experience, but we curate it for each of the stops that we go to, knowing that there's somebody who's always looking for needlecraft at, at one stop, and somebody else who wants cozy large print mystery. So we, we change what's on the carts depending on what stop we're going to. But as with bookmobile, we also do a lot of holds. If there's a particular title, you want the new John Grisham, you want the new nonfiction bestseller, we'll be happy to bring that out to you as well. And with bookmobile and van, one of the neat things about it is it is a gathering of the book and movie lovers at a particular facility. So we're doing readers advisory, but they're all giving each other readers advisory as well, and it's a, it's a really positive, fun experience for the residents and for our staff as well. In addition to bookmobile and van, we have another delivery service that we call house calls. Like I said, it used to be called homebound. This is for somebody who lives in Monroe County but can't make it to any of our branches or to either of the vehicles. Usually, it's because of a disability or a chronic health issue. We do have a couple of users who qualify because they just don't have a reliable transportation option. They don't drive themselves, they're not on a bus line, they may occasionally get a friend or, or relative to take them to the doctors or the grocery store, but a trip to the library isn't in the cards regularly, so just a couple of people there. But we generally have about 75 to 90 people on the service. It's currently at 81 individuals. We're adding new people to homebound. Every month, we add a couple of people. Unfortunately, we're seeing a lot of people towards the end of their lives, and we're losing people off of the service. Sometimes they're moving to an assisted care facility where we may serve them with the van, or they may be moving in with family, but often we're seeing people towards the end of their lives, and we're doing what we can to improve the quality of life for especially isolated seniors in the community where we, we know we do make a big difference. With house calls, there's no browsing. Instead, we make, when you apply for the service, you fill out an application indicating what formats you're interested in, what genres, favorite authors, that sort of thing, and then we are happy to make the selections for you. We always encourage house calls users to make their own selections by getting online or calling the library and saying this is what they want in the next delivery, and many do that to start out, but we supplement it with things we think you'll like, and then almost invariably, people turn all the selection over to us because how great to have your personal book concierge that calls you every month to see what you're, what you're interested in, and it puts the occasional surprise that may delight you or may not, but it's, it's something new and unexpected. So that service is very, very popular. Beyond that, we have a service to headstarts and daycare, so now we're at the other end of the age spectrum. When we started the van service many years ago, before I started, the bookmobile used to go to some daycares. I frankly don't know how that possibly worked, and it didn't work very well because they discontinued it. We couldn't get to very many, for one thing, and then preschoolers and leaving the facility and books getting lost, it was fairly chaotic, so we cut the service off maybe 30 years ago. With the van, we realized we had a different mechanism to provide service to, to our youngest readers in the community. So this is a monthly delivery that we provide to larger daycares and some of the larger registered ministry daycares in the county. Children's library assistants do the selection of the materials, and then along with the house calls deliveries, we deliver them to the larger daycares. But for headstart locations, we also do a monthly storytime. We have a children's early literacy specialist librarian in the department, Libby Pennington, and she will do a program, basically a storytime program, which is reading aloud from picture books, but also finger plays, singing and dancing, all that fun stuff. She has the most fun job in the library, although she probably needs to have the best immune system in the library, especially based on what she told me she encountered just today. But for headstart locations and also for the NEST at New Hope, New Hope is a family shelter in the community, and NEST is their preschool program, she'll do that added benefit of a storytime in addition to the monthly drop-off. We do occasional storytimes at the other daycares as well. Then we also have a service at the Monroe County Correctional Facility, our jail library service. This is very much a partnership with the sheriff's department. They provide us with a budget of $8,000 a year. We then spend that money on their behalf to stock their library, it's their books, that, that we purchase for them, and then we're over there three days a week for two hours on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, doing circulation and readers advisory to the inmates of the correctional facility. This is the most popular program that's run at the jail. Needless to say, the inmates love it. Being incarcerated is a very difficult experience, and having a way to spend that time with quality literature, whether it's recreational or educational, and we circulate a lot of both, does help that time pass a little bit more easily, and it's very popular with the jail administration and staff as well. I can't imagine a way they could spend $8,000 to better ensure the safety and security of the facility, to have these people with a lot of time on their hands and often a lot of frustration, sometimes mental health issues as well, to have a way where many of the residents of the jail can spend their time quietly in a, in a positive fashion. We circulate about 12,000 items a year in the jail. That's how many books we check out, but that's a deceptively, way deceptively low number because each inmate can only get five books per visit, which is nowhere's near enough for most of them, so each book that we check out probably on average gets shared with three readers. I should probably triple that number to come up with a better estimate of how many we actually circulate. Sure.
Strictly paper?
We are strictly print, so we have talked for years about ways to do electronic media there. The inmates do have access to tablets that they now use for many different things, so many of the lawyer visits and family visits are done with like FaceTime-type app on a tablet. Use of those tablets, though, has required commissary funds for the individuals unless it's a lawyer visit, so we're absolutely committed to all of our services being free, and many of the, the folks there would not have the funds for that. There's also logistics on how our eBooks circulate and how we would do that in a jail environment, so you could get the book that you wanted when you wanted. It's hard enough for those of us who aren't incarcerated and know when we're going to be able to access the tablet. It's even harder there, so we put some thought in it, but, into it, but we haven't found a mechanism that works currently. So, yeah, other issues as well with electronic devices, so we'll continue to talk with them about it, but I don't see a viable way to do that at this point. I'm about to turn it over to Bethany, but I did want to talk about one other thing that, it's not specifically outreach. Last year, when I did my presentation, we had really just started our mobility aids lending library, so this is a fairly new initiative. Part of my job is partnering with other agencies that serve similar clientele, so I'm on the executive committee for the Bloomington Council for Community Accessibility. I'm also the library's ADA coordinator. I'm on the advisory council for the Area 10 Agency for Aging. I work with a lot of people with disabilities, and a group of, they all happen to be women, and they all happen to be wheelchair users, who are part of the CCA, the Council for Community Accessibility, were realizing that each of them had in their basement or their garage or a spare bedroom a sizable collection of mobility aids that they used to use, but no longer use, but that were still in good shape, and they didn't know how to share them with members of the community who could benefit. So they came up with this idea of the mobile aids lending library, but I'm meeting with them on a regular basis and hear about this, and it's like, what, library? Hey, that's, 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 that's my wheelhouse. So we tried to figure, and we're also the specialists in distributing things, not just media, but as Greer's been talking about, our library of things, where we're now circulating iPads and binoculars and mobile hotspots. So what an opportunity for us to get mobility aids, which are often very expensive, out into the community, and to do it without any real cost to the library except some staff time because there is this, these caches of unused equipment that people are looking to donate. So this was a somewhat tricky thing for us to incorporate into our lending programs. For one thing, our systems assume that you're going to borrow it and then you're going to bring it back with, if you're borrowing a walker, you may only need it for a couple of weeks if you're recovering from an injury or a surgery, but you may need it indefinitely or perhaps for the rest of your life. So we didn't want to have any due dates. We also had some liability concerns. If you were using some crutches you got from the library and took a spill, could the library be considered liable for that? Well, possibly, so we consulted with Mr. Bunger and his colleagues and also with our insurance company on how we could cover the library, protect the library, and we now have a liability waiver, which is a fairly new thing, although we're also needing it for the teaching kitchen at the Southwest Branch. So there have been some hurdles, but as of a couple of months ago, you can now here at downtown go upstairs and borrow one of four different types of devices, canes, crutches, rolators, and walkers. If you're interested in other things like wheelchairs or electric devices or transfer devices, our mall partners can provide those. They were a little too tricky or too big for us to store here, but it is a new program. The publicity for it's going to be ramping up. The use, I think I've circulated three items this week so far, so I see the demand, once word gets out there, increasing, and I'm really glad that we're able to meet that community need as well, so. So I don't take up too much time. I'm going to let Bethany go, and then if you have any general, oh, if you have a question now, sure.
You're doing things wonderful. I thought when you were talking about the bookmobile, because of the Southwest Branch, did that stop some of that, and then you were able to use that time to go elsewhere?
That is a great question. That was certainly my expectation. We have two stops, one at Clear Creek Elementary School, one at Lighthouse Christian Academy that are within a mile or two of the Southwest Branch. If I were talking to you last, when I was talking to you last year, I probably said those two were probably going to be cut. Well, when we floated that idea to the users of those stops, they were like, no, you can't possibly do that. So I said, I'll tell you what, I'm not going to cancel them unless circulation drops off at those stops, in which case, that's the criteria that we use. Well, those two stops are still going really strong, so we haven't made any adjustments, even though I certainly thought that we would. We're always, we always have a backlog of places we want to get to, and, and stops kind of come and go in their popularity. We do have a few that are still on the bubble, even those, some of the ones that I wanted to cut, so I know we'll be making some changes in, in January or February, which is when we usually do, but not the stops closest to Southwest because they're still going strong, so.
Would the bookmobile still be working well? I don't know whether, because I'm new to this, would we be able to acquire a new bookmobile and keep the other one and use two?
That is another great question, and Greer and I talk about that regularly. I would love to have a bookmobile that specializes in school-age visits. Many communities with robust outreach programs have that. Those services can be wonderful. The teachers, not surprisingly, love it. We could support the curriculum, we could supplement the curriculum, we could teach those, those literacy skills, those research skills that are so sorely needed in the age when AI can now do your papers for you and Google can provide all the answers, in quotes there, because of course, that's not true. So, yeah, there's a need out there. My biggest concern, other than the money, and I know Gary, he's got a color printer, he can, he can come up with the money, but storing a bookmobile inside is so nice, and we do not have a garage facility where we could store another vehicle, so. We talked about it with Southwest and whether there would be the possibility there, but the underground garage isn't big enough, so maybe. I would love to see it happen, but it's not, it's not going to be in our strategic plan for the next three years, maybe the next one, so.
I know that, you know, you're doing wonderful things with your outreach and your van services to the senior citizen centers and people who can't get to places because of their age. I work the election, and since we are in the business of disseminating, disseminating information, I discovered that there's a great need for people in those homes, in nursing homes and, you know, assisted living places, and people who are homebound, that they need information. Have you thought about partnering with Election Central to make sure that they're aware of the traveling board, they're aware of something that they can understand that there are services for them to be able to vote?
That's a great question, and frankly, we have not. I know we partnered with the League of Women Voters generally in the library in the past, and I'm not sure if they're the best. We really do focus on, on circulating media in a traditional library way as opposed to information. Our encounters with people are generally pretty brief. Our van stops, for example, are a half an hour, and they're really focused on that readers advisory component. We get all sorts of requests to distribute literature for various nonprofit organizations, and we're able to take some folks up on that, but nowhere's near all of them. That said, and I've worked with, with accessibility on all the polling locations around the county with my CCA work, so I, I hear the need and, and think that it is extremely important. We would need to find the right community partners, I think, to do that.
I would encourage you with your outreach mission, and because it goes to so many places, that I would encourage you to work with Nicole Brown, to see what you can do to just give information, not to facilitate the vote, but to give information, because many of them were not aware of the city elections and the municipal elections, so.
Yeah, that's right, and I do know Nicole, actually, she, she ran the, the State Juvenile Detention Facility Education Program back when I started bookmobile, which was, she was wonderful to work with then, and I worked with her on the accessibility of polling locations, so that's a good idea. The whole neutrality issue, and, and not that we wouldn't be neutral, but the, the concerns that we might not be, that's a huge issue for me, so I'd love to find somebody else to partner with, and Nicole would be, yeah, as the, as.
And I think what we were hearing is that they just needed to know that there was a time and a date, and there's our options for them to be able to vote.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion. I will follow up with her. All right, now I'm going to turn it over to Bethany, who will fill you in on what's going on in vital. Thanks.
Hi there. I'm Bethany Turrentine, I'm the coordinator for vital, volunteers in tutoring adult learners. Our primary services are one-on-one tutoring and small groups for adults who want to improve their reading, writing, or English language skills. We also do tutoring for adults who are studying for the high school equivalency test, the citizenship test, or the driver's license test. And I'm very happy to share that after the long haul of COVID and virtual learning, we had a very normal year this year. It was so nice, which means we've been very busy. We're back to meeting mostly in person and are continuing to offer our typical vital activities along with some new areas of growth. So in terms of learner participation so far this year, we've had 215 learners representing 46 different countries. About 33% of the learners speak Spanish as their native language, 9% Korean, 4% English, and 3% Chinese. Most learners actually speak more than one language, so I wouldn't be surprised if the total languages represented was over 100. Staff have completed 146 intakes so far this year. The intake is where we meet with each individual to find out, first of all, if their needs are something that the vital volunteer can support. If not, we help them locate other community resources that might be more appropriate for them. But then we also do an assessment to get an idea of what their current skill levels are and also what their level of self-sufficiency is, to see if there are any challenges or barriers we can help them with, so that they'll be successful in the vital program. One of the goals of the intake is to start building a shared understanding of what the library is and how it can be a part of their lives and help them with their learning goals. It's really, one of my favorite things actually is to meet with someone who is not familiar with the concept of an American public library, that it's here for everyone, that they can bring their families, they can take the books home, that everything is free, so that's been a really, really satisfying area to work with and to provide those tours and opportunities for families who aren't familiar with, with what a library and opportunities for families who aren't familiar with what a library can be for them. One of the greatest needs that we're seeing from those intakes is beginning English, beginning English language learners who need a one-on-one tutor. This is also one of the most difficult areas to teach, particularly if you and your learner don't have the same language, you're going to need a lot of help in terms of how to approach and make sure that that learner is able to acquire the language that they so greatly need. So we've been working on developing more resources for our volunteers to help them become effective teachers. One of our favorites is the Literacy Minnesota English Unlocked Curriculum. It was actually developed by educators and designed for novice teachers. So it's very user-friendly. It's also very practical, focusing on daily life skills. So there's a series of 12 topics, including daily activities, work and family, health problems, shopping for clothing, and it provides a structure for tackling the large behemoth that is the English language and gives them kind of incremental lessons and support along the way. Another resource we've been developing is Beginner Kits for Teaching English. These involve a lot of hands-on materials for learning some of the foundational skills that you're going to need: letters and sounds of the alphabet, basic numeracy, calendars, clocks, anything involving calendars and time. Those are pretty difficult skills to master, and they're also really important, so we're trying to provide as many opportunities for practice as possible. We're also seeing a large increase in requests for tutoring outside of the downtown location. Most of these are at the Southwest branch, so we're also working with the branches to make sure the plethora of materials that we have here are also accessible at other locations. Each branch now has a mini Vital collection, and we're gathering information on the usage and the needs to determine kind of what the future of those collections will look like. One of our most exciting accomplishments for this year was the launching of our new online tutor training in Canvas. It's the English as a Teaching, English as a New Language. New volunteers started accessing the training in June, and since then, we've had 26 volunteers complete the training. We've been collecting their feedback, which we'll be using to make updates on that training, but also for the next stage, which is to add on additional courses. So English as a New Language is just one of the areas that we support. The next area, the next course that we're going to be developing is for teaching adult basic literacy, high school equivalency, and then digital literacy. So it is a project that will just keep going. Offering the training online means that volunteers can start tutoring more quickly and have access, once they've completed the training, they do have access to in-person training with staff, once they've been assigned to a specific learner. It's much more effective to be able to talk about resources and materials and skills when you're talking about an actual individual person rather than a hypothetical. So it's worked well so far. We are currently, in terms of our status, we're averaging about 50 students on the waitlist right now. That is higher than what our pre-pandemic levels were. That was usually around 30 students on the waitlist, but it is lower than our all-time high, which is in the 80s, so we are moving in the right direction. And we're hoping that as we increase access to training, those numbers will continue to even out, and we'll be able to more quickly bridge that gap between people who want to teach and people who want to learn. One of the other normal activities we really enjoyed returning to this year was community events for Outreach. So just this fall, we were at multiple volunteer fairs, the IU First Friday event, Fiesta del Otono, and Mother Hubbard's cupboard. Looking ahead, one of our 2024 strategic actions is to increase opportunities for Vital participants to participate in these advocacy activities with us. I can talk about Vital all night, but really those personal stories and connections and word of mouth are what keep the program going and keep us alive in the hearts and minds of the community. So be on the lookout for those voices. I don't know that I will ever have someone brave enough to join me here, but I sure hope so, maybe next year. So, do you have any questions? Yeah.
If you sign up in your number 50, approximately how long until you get matched with a tutor?
There's a little bit of a kind of a waiting of the waitlist, if that makes sense. If you are a beginner, you're going to get matched a little bit sooner because if you're a beginner, you have longer to go. So if you are, if you're a beginner, I'm going to say roughly right now, it's probably six to eight weeks. If you're more advanced, it's going to be much longer, probably, you know, we're talking, you know, multiple months. But if you are more advanced, we do have our conversation groups, and those are available to anyone. You can drop in anytime, as long as you have enough English that you can have a simple conversation, if you know enough vocabulary. We have those five days a week, morning, afternoon, and evening. We also have one at the Southwest branch, so that option is one that you, there is no wait for, so very pleased about that. Yeah.
You mentioned that you have had success with your online training for the teachers. I hope that there's another option because some people may not have the option to do online. Do you still continue your, like, face-to-face instruction for teaching those teachers to work with Vital?
So we haven't hit that specific problem yet, but we did think about that when we were developing the training. Each tutoring room has a computer in it, and so when we offer the training for everyone, first of all, volunteers always come to an orientation first where they learn more about the program, and I stay afterwards and talk with people individually about how they'd like to proceed. And so if someone either hasn't done an online training before or they might need more help, we invite them to come in and do it in the office so that staff is always there and we can help them work through the modules. So that's our current solution, and if we hit other barriers, we'll certainly look at that. And we do continue to offer the in-person training. Once you've met with your learner for three or four weeks, you sit down with the Vital staff and you talk about how is it going, what are their goals, and look at putting together lesson plans and materials. So the in-person component is still there. It just actually allows us to do more of that because our time isn't spent on that initial training. Yeah.
Something then we subscribe to, or is that something in connection with IU?
Yeah, so we're using Canvas Free for teachers, so there's no cost. Yeah. Great, all right. Thank you so much. See you next year.
Thank you very much, Bethany. Again, you provide such a wonderful service for our community, so thank you very much for all you do. Okay, we've come to the portion of our meeting that it's time for public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to step forward and address the board tonight? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn for the evening? All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose, nay, the ayes have it. And board members, just a reminder that we will be meeting upstairs immediately after this one, as soon as we all get up there for our executive meeting. Thank you.